I'm gonna bring in Dunbar, Board of Selectmen meeting to order for Thursday, March sixth, seven P M. All three selectmen are present. The town administrator is here. Leo Martell is videoing for the public and Linda Nickerson will upload those to Utown and the town website. And the fire chief just came in. And now we've got the town moderator just came in.
Oh, sorry.
Like the party.
Oh, there's our county clerk coming in now. So let's go, the town officials here today. And we have our state rep here as well. Okay, under all business, we have the previous meeting minutes.
We'll make a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February twentieth, twenty twenty five.
How's it with those? Motion made seconded, no changes by so how they look right?
I got two, one more ready. Capture everything.
All in favor?
Aye.
Here you go, Mike. Okay. I'm gonna open it up to public comment quickly if there's anybody that's not here on the agenda. No public comment at this time. I'll open up another one later in the meeting. Going to town business first. We've got the town clerk, Jennifer Cormer, and the town moderator, John Tradi, here for an update of the meeting and election coming up. And we have an email here from Shelley Westenberg, reference to the tech aide to help us with the sound system that day. I'm not sure if everybody read this notice, but it looks like there's only available for March eleventh for the sound system. Their standard rate so far has been twenty-six seventeen per hour with a two-hour minimum. They're asking if that's okay for him to submit an invoice afterwards. Your thoughts on that, Lee?
Right, currently, there's nobody trained. So if we wanna be prepared and that make everything easier.
And I think it's good to have a copy of transcript of that town meeting for, from reference.
When would it start? Start time would be, uh, the town meeting time?
I would say six-thirty or so, just so that.
Yeah, I think he will start a little earlier.
Six, six-thirty?
To get it set up.
Right, so at six forty-five, everything should be operational.
Correct, yeah.
And I don't know probably the two-hour minimum, because we should go over that pretty easy.
Yeah, so again, my thinking is you're gonna come in, set it up, be able to train somebody, and again, more people that we can get there to train, but like getting volunteers and those.
Well, moderator said it was gonna last, you know, one hour for the meeting.
Well, how quickly you guys talk.
No, I, I, I think that's, I think it's good if we can send someone to shout.
Yeah, but I know, I know Shelley was gonna shout, shout, well, but.
I think I need to, because I have to present something for the board on an article, and I just found out today that the projector we had donated from former chief was sold at auction last year. So I don't have anything to project with, so I guess I have to learn.
So you're gonna?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll show you.
So it looks like we're gonna learn it, but he will be there to offer services as well.
Yeah, he'll, he'll be doing it and training people. So then in the future, hopefully, we can have.
Yeah, so it's a two-hour minimum, right? They're gonna spend sixty bucks, but if we need a more, you know.
We have Mike there.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
So the consensus of the board is the dollar amount is fine, and we will go ahead and use him on the March eleventh.
And the invoice after the fact is fine.
Yeah.
Do you wanna check on the line item, or?
Why are we taking that up?
That could come out of one of our funds, 'cause it's obviously not budgeted from.
Yeah, I'm sure I can find something in the supply line or something.
Okay.
I mean, if you, it should probably go in. Well, yeah, it's not an election staff, though, it's town meeting, I guess, is that what's.
But it's related to the election, so it could go there as well, so.
Potentially goes.
Yeah.
So maybe in the future, we'll put in something in the budget to cover that type of use.
Yeah, if we can think of anybody else that would be.
Yeah, we're gonna be tied up.
Right, or if somebody listening says, oh, you know, I'd like to do that, or I know somebody who loves A D and would like to learn.
They'll love A D.
Yeah, sure, I'd love that.
Which is gonna be out of town, right?
Yeah, I'll make sure.
Okay, so, um, why don't we go ahead and get the, um, election update?
Yeah.
From you guys.
So again, I've spoke with Woody this afternoon, set up is Monday, uh, March tenth, twenty-five, at three P M. Your, your assistance would be greatly appreciated, please.
Three P M, John?
Yes, please.
School open that day?
Uh, the school is not in session, I don't think that day. Might need some staff.
Who's there?
On Tuesday?
Eleven's there. Oh, on Monday. On Monday, they're having the after-school program upstairs.
Okay, yeah, that's right, I was kinda alluding to that, that's good.
Yeah, so they're having that upstairs so that the gym will be available for setup at three.
Great, thank you.
You know, if I could just re- request that you gentlemen review your duties as selectmen and your responsibilities of being, uh, voting officials, please.
I wanna make a note that Justin's not running this year, so his full-duty response could be requested.
Yeah, so he can't be off.
That's right.
Bob can't.
Yeah, that's what he's there for. If I can go get coffee and everything else.
Is Bob gonna, is he gonna?
It's a user.
It's fine with you, but not with me.
That's all right, doesn't have to be.
Well, if you won't be there, you won't be meals. You'll be there a bunch of it, though, right?
Yeah, for the meals, for sure.
And the training that was sent out from the Secretary of State, um, and the training slides I reviewed today, there were some changes, like the I D. There's no more provisional ballot or anything like that you had before, which is great.
Yes, it is.
It's not being done anymore.
Yeah.
And they, they were kinda expanded the authority to selectmen and election officials who could verify people to get their I Ds.
Yeah.
Other than that, it's pretty straightforward, but there's no, none of this running up, keeping those ballots separate. As you recall, it was gonna be a albatross around your neck.
Correct.
And so that's going on. I, I, that was one thing, there was the legislation that was finally passed and implemented by Secretary of State.
Yeah, it seems, it seems like they might have simplified it, but yet, you know, Jennifer, Jennifer and I just had that discussion, you know, and next year will change too.
Right, it's called job security for those election officials on top of the state.
I like how you do that, Genify.
What's that?
I like how you did that, Genify.
Pretty quick, huh? Okay. Again, I think, uh, nobody's on the ballot, so everybody's eligible to do, uh, duties as assigned, that's great.
And you get the weather forecast for snow?
Uh, yeah, I put in, I, I, I put in the requests.
Okay.
The old weather is coming back.
Yeah, it is, tomorrow. Be too nice, a day, cancel it. I live in New England. Yeah, again, Jennifer's not on the ballot, so that was good as well. As far as working out ballot clerks, you know, workers scheduled, poll workers scheduled, Jennifer's got that well under control, in my opinion. Again, unfortunately, again, you know, it's hard to get people to volunteer, but I'm gonna try to put a little spiel again, like I did last year, just.
Yeah.
So it all takes people, warm bodies to do this, so.
Are we, uh, gonna be looking for people to, uh?
Count ballots, yes, yeah, as we typically do.
We send an email out to everybody that counted before, to see if they were gonna volunteer, and we've done that.
We not, we, we won't need as many counters as we'd had in November, for example.
Right, we can hit them when they're dropping off the ballots, we, we always interview them and say, you wanna sign up for tonight?
Correct.
I think on the big one, you did email first, right?
Yeah, on the big one, I had a, I was a little better under control with the list. I was just saying to John, I've started the list, but it's not too far along yet, there's a lot of other things I gotta, worst case, we'll solicit Tuesday.
You're good at that.
I've, I've started a list.
Yeah.
I know, right, who to pick on?
Yeah.
And it's, it's good, as I mentioned last time, with somebody's undeclared, even though it's a nonpartisan election, that we still have one person who typically votes Republican and one who typically votes Democratic together at a table, so we don't have two people leaning the same way. Of course, it's not partisan, it's, but that's the guidance from Secretary of State, so I'll be looking, if somebody's undeclared, looking up which color to put on their name tag.
Okay.
We're not pulling Jennifer too in the past, we're not gonna kill her, just don't, don't lose any sleep over it, you know.
Yeah, we'll, we'll try our best.
Yep, yep, that's all we can do. As far as meals, Dave, you only, you can only have one, so we ripped up your other one.
I'm not gonna be around that, the rest.
Just a reminder to get those to Jennifer, please.
I think everything's in you.
Yeah, but, uh, tables, again, the only person that's requested one was Dawn, so we'll, we'll have him. The girl scout said reach out to me for a table on Saturday, but it's not your dealings. And as far as the P D, Jennifer, you did, you have spoken with Chris, correct?
Uh, yes, Officer Milliotto should be there all day.
Okay.
And you're gonna have the exit the same way you've had in the past, going out the far end of the rooms?
Um, you know what, I, I wasn't, I wasn't planning on kinda keeping it that way.
It's a pretty small election this time.
Yeah, it's a small election, you can have the ability to, to do that, Mike, but I.
I think you're right, it would just be, we're just, a lot of square footage, we could have that all set up ahead of time if we need to.
Yeah, and you know, again, with, if we can get some of the, the room set up for the
Meeting.
For the meeting would be nice, too, you know, I wasn't really planning on, on getting too crazy with that.
Okay.
This time around.
Yeah, well, you have the help there for the first three hours to get them set up for the meeting will be helpful.
Jennifer, I think that's all I have on my list.
And then one of the other election laws, just to point out, is how you register to vote has changed. And so people can no longer do affidavits to say, oh, yeah, I, I don't have my passport with me, it's at home, but I'm a U S citizen, and sign an affidavit. They have to either bring their, they're registering to vote, whether it's at the polls or in advance. In, in advance is closed now, so just at the polls. They have to bring passport, or birth certificate, or naturalization documents, or sign an affidavit saying that these do not exist, but really, I am a U S citizen, but then that's, you know, followed up on. And similar with, um, for residency, like bringing utility bill, rental agreement, or having that on their driver's license, that, that sort of thing, it's, it's, um, stricter than it used to be. So that all took effect right after the November election. The supervisors aren't aware of all that and proceeding accordingly.
We're not taping any boxes up after this one? Or do we have?
Yeah, I don't believe we need to, do we?
Taping boxes.
There's, there's no transport to the state, it all, it all stays local, although it does.
That's my, yeah, yeah, as far as I know, unless there's a recount. And then the other difference that we've already mentioned is we will be using the one-for-all machine.
And the new one?
The new one, well, the, the, the existing one that we've been borrowing from the state, they sent to us again, and John and I have both tested that with the sample, with the absentee ballots. Although we didn't actually test it with the ones from the printer, I almost wonder if that would be something to check with on Secretary of State, I don't know if they.
We're gonna slate.
It's not, it's not part of the usual procedure, but it's the same size, and they assured me they were printing it a hundred percent, 'cause I said it has to be one hundred percent, not, not best fit, you know.
Right.
So it's very specific, so.
Well, you know, yeah, so we did have.
One of us will vote early on in the day, use the machine and make sure it's working, you know.
That's usually what I'm doing in a.
First, when you first get in, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sleeping, so.
Hey, John, what would take a long clock for?
And I have your cord, Lee, 'cause I got a couple from work.
What?
I, I need to remember.
Oh, the cord?
Yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, Jen, anything else?
Not that comes to mind.
Two other things that come to my mind, again, we'll acknowledge you after I read, uh, Enid and Dawn's dedication to the, you get the flag?
Yes, all set.
You're all set?
Yep.
But, and you are a state representative?
Correct.
For this, for the town of Dunbar?
Correct.
But, will, will the board recognize John Wigan?
We will, and, uh, we actually have a, a little plaque we're gonna vote on later tonight to, uh, give him, at the same time.
Which, uh, we'll have some verbiage for you to read, probably, or some, something easy to read.
Okay, it's up to you, either me or you.
That's fine.
My, my suggestion is probably to do it at the beginning of the, after Dawn and Enid, Enid.
Okay.
Mainly because there's more people that, that will be staying there.
Yeah.
Versus at the conclusion of the meeting where.
Fair enough.
Makes sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes good sense, and I'll get that portion of the meeting away, and.
Yeah.
Lee, do we have, uh, the exact number of his years of service as chief?
I do.
Or, or a quick bio, a small bio, very small bio?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe total number of years on the department so far, number of years as chief, and then we're gonna reiterate, of course, I'm still on the department.
I think you guys might have just recently recognized all the firefighters.
Should be forty-five as chief, and I'll have to look back, I totally use the service, it's second to the other forty.
For his twenty-five years from the town clerk.
And what, on the department number forty?
I believe so, yeah, I'll have to go check.
Yeah, if you can just get that information, Lee, and so we're accurate at the meeting, we're gonna just make that, you know, announcement at the meeting. And then also announce that you're the new, new chief, John, go do that, I think.
Yeah, and it was gonna do that when you're addressing one of the, your articles.
Sure.
Makes sense?
Well, just bring the articles up, we'll do that, introduce you.
Recommendation, where you chief's uniform?
There's a, there isn't one.
They keep a pretty low key on the fire department.
Okay, well, I think it's, it's, it's good, I think it's good, public's gonna see you for the first time, which is great.
Yeah.
And me, I got the, your, the script, thank you.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, I'm good.
Anything that lets things go nice and slow, importantly? But if you need anything else between now and then, just let me know.
No worries.
Good.
Go ahead.
Mike had given you an update that we had from our town attorney, or we're gonna read that prior to it, we've already checked into it, and, uh, be aware of our surroundings during that meeting for that description.
Yeah.
If anything comes up. And Jennifer, we have, um, a bunch of the wetland applications that I've signed, I think these guys might have gotten a chance to look at them, but they are all in the office, um, to go through, we've got a good bunch the last week or so here.
They came from Jennifer.
So if you guys haven't looked at them, uh, try and review those, and the maps are attached to them.
I believe we're being notified as, uh, as representing the town as a buttress to the ongoing wetlands activity.
Yeah, and Jennifer, I'm gonna bring up the next thing on the agenda, was your wetland application fee you're recommending, that we do away with that ten-dollar fee, 'cause it's not applicable for the new RSA.
Correct, and I do have copies of the twenty-third, well, I don't know when the law changed, I figured that was irrelevant, but if you look in twenty thirteen, um, it says that the town, bringing them to the town clerk will may require administrative fees not to exceed ten dollars plus the cost of postage by certified mail. So the new, um, the current RSA does not allow for any fee to be collected by the town.
Okay.
So we need to strike it, it's just, this was the first time I processed any wetlands, um, permanent applications. And as I was checking into it to see, you know, to make sure, how do I go about this fee? I found out, well, you don't do it anymore, so.
I think as a board, we have consensus to strike down, to have your recommendation.
Just a, yeah, come, align with ours.
I'll add these to the back of that, just a little. Put that if you want.
All right, so you're okay to strike that?
Yeah. Jennifer, anything else for us, since you're in front of us now?
That's, that's it.
John, anything further?
I'm good.
Thank you guys both for coming in.
See you Monday.
See you on Monday, and we'll get things rolling.
Yep, I'm good.
Okay.
We'll do it. No call, it's a go.
Can't, don't have your number, I mean, I'm John Tradi.
I'm gonna, um, go out of order here.
Yeah, I don't think.
We'll hit the, uh, Jeff Crowe, the, the agenda balancing, so we'll go right to the fire chief, if you wanna come up and do the discussion on the EMS jobs. I did review your, got back in our confidential file, um, your email earlier, uh, looking at the different positions and the pay, and I looked at your, um, firefighter EMS per diem, um, job description and summary, and I think that that was very well written. Did you guys get a chance to look at it?
Sure did.
There was, um, a couple of things in the wording in here, that, that said company officer, I'm not sure, is that standard wording in the, in the industry, is that how you pick that?
Yeah, company officer's a generic term that you could use for other lieutenant or a captain, or line officer, basically.
Okay, I figured that was the case, so, um, I read through it, and I didn't see any issues with that.
I think the only thing that, um, after reading through it one more time, the only thing that I might change, or I'd like to change, is under the, uh, the minimum qualifications.
Yeah.
Um, there's a, there's a, a few credentials that paramedics, as a best practice, should retain after their initial certification, but they're not required to by law. So advanced cardiac life support, pediatric advanced life support, those are things that we get in our initial training, that I would like to see all of the paramedics who work for the department retain.
Okay.
So I might add that.
Do they expire?
They do, they expire every two years, just like a CPR card.
Yeah.
CPR is one of those minimum certifications that everybody has to carry, but the things that are pretty critical, like advanced life support and pediatric advanced life support, are not required, but, I'd like to add that in there to make sure that any paramedics who work for the department retain those.
Would that be at our expense?
Uh.
It should be, I think it should be.
It could be.
Because it's part of training, per se.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't have an issue covering that.
They're like a sub though, aren't they?
They are, I, I wouldn't have an issue covering it, if we're the only agency that they work for, then I wouldn't have an issue covering that. However, most paramedics, uh, at least in the capital area, um, when they do their refresher training program, it's, they're usually hosted by Concord Hospital. So forty-eight hour program covers CPR, the other two certifications, and a litany of other.
Every two years, that's reasonable.
Yeah. And it's, uh, and, and just for your knowledge, that for, uh, for a capital area town to sponsor a paramedic to go is about four hundred dollars for that one, like forty-eight hour class. So it's a pretty good rate for that, but for the most part, it, you know, the paramedics that I have that are on right now are already working for other services who, who do that for them.
Okay.
Now, you wanna go over the, um, your pay scale that you were recommending?
Yeah, yeah, so the, uh, when I originally, when I originally met with John, he had, uh, he had told me that, what he'd come up with in, in polling other departments was a ballpark number of twenty-eight dollars and fifty cents an hour.
Okay.
Um, it was a single pay rate, uh, and one of the things that I've seen in, in other departments where the, there's a single pay rate, is that they struggle to fill those positions with higher-level practitioners, like paramedics. If, you know, a paramedic who's gone to school for a few years, or making the same amount of money as either an A E, you know, E M T or an A E M T.
Right.
Um, it's difficult to do that, so it's usually better to break it up based on credentials, based on your experience. So as an E M T, uh, you'll get an entry level amount, as a mid-level practitioner, as an A E M T, you get an entry, or, um, a mid-level amount, and then as a paramedic, you get expense, you have more experience, you know.
That part, that part made good sense to me, I, I didn't really understand the, um, Monday through Thursday, and then Fridays, if you could explain that part of it to me.
Yeah, so I based, uh, this was just to help me get the most accurate representation of where the funds are gonna, or can go.
Yeah.
Um, the, of the four per diems that I've already spoken to who are willing to work, uh, and, and start taking on this responsibility, I do have one who's a paramedic, who told me that he's available pretty much every Friday. So I broke up the, the weekdays, Monday through Friday.
Okay.
And a Monday through Thursday, and a parami, in a, in a, a Friday fashion, just to account for that extra money that a paramedic would get paid on a Friday.
Okay.
And then the Monday through Thursday, I averaged out at an A E M T, because the other three, um, per diems aren't at the A E M T market.
So you, you see, fill this with a multiple people?
Yeah, so far, I have four people that are already department members, um, they're all career firefighters and EMS providers at other agencies, uh, and they're willing to, to take up a, a per diem, and, and cover your, so.
I guess I'll avoid burnout, too.
Yeah, 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 we certainly, I, I, and, and even with four people, I don't know that I'm gonna be able to fill Monday through Friday, every, every day during the week, there's, there's gonna be times where there's vacancies, and it's funny, because everybody, everybody who's full-time right now works in a rotating schedule, and at different agencies, they have a different schedule rotation.
And it looks like you're looking at your budget, uh, doing that?
Yeah, so if I do it as, uh, right now, if I staff it from April first through December, with these rates, I can come in under budget, and that's if I even max out at a nine-hour day. If I go to an eight-hour day, I can still save about eight thousand dollars in the budget, so really have to, just take a deep dive and look at where the busiest hours are, which brings me to the, the next part of it. Uh, so if you look on page two, uh, you have a, a, a bunch of obscure numbers that are on the left-hand side, uh, twenty-twenty-four EMS runs by hour of the day. So your left-hand column is the hour of the day, the zero through twenty-three, the right-hand column is the number of incidents, and those are total incidents that run over twenty-twenty-four. Um, so the, uh, the greatest, uh, the greatest focus or the busiest time seem to be between eight and five. Uh, so I think if I was to, to staff it at an eight-hour day, I would go eight to four, if I staff it a nine-hour day, I would do eight to five. That would just be to target the busiest hours of the day.
Makes sense, yeah.
If that was to shift, and that was to change, I was to see trends in other directions, I could ask the per diems to, to shift hours, and.
And obviously, most people are gone to work during the day, so you'd have less chance of getting two people on the call.
Yeah.
Okay, that seems so.
Um, the numbers that are on the side there, that's the, the eight to four, what I, what I calculated in, uh, in eight-hour day, there was a hundred and seventeen of them. That's not actually broken up by day of the week, or limited by day of the week, so that includes Saturdays and Sundays in there as well. But that turns out to be, uh, a hundred and eighty-eight calls Monday through Friday, which leaves about a hundred calls that happen on the weekends. So we finished at two hundred and eighty-eight calls last year.
And you're, um, you also have a budget here for proposed twenty-twenty-six?
Yeah, so I, I included twenty-twenty-six numbers, because the unique thing we're doing this year is we're not staffing it January one through March. Uh, so if we continue these same numbers in twenty-twenty-six, I just wanted to break it down so you could see eight-hour days, nine-hour days.
Twenty-five cents, sure.
Yeah, yeah, so it's.
I'm glad you showed that, at least we know what you're looking at, your, for your budget next.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, yeah, that's if we keep these same, the same pay rates, as long as those work, as long as I can retain enough, uh, you know, train and retain enough, a qualified individual with these pay rates, which I think I'll be able to do, then.
One thing I think you, you're gonna wanna do is at least, uh, I know this is preliminary budget, but add a call amount in there as well, so.
Yeah, some of the other things that I thought about, aside from the, uh, the physical pay, um, I'm gonna see, what our, like, it's gonna look like having a person in the building for another forty or forty-five hours per week.
Right.
Fuel usage, uh, running more errands, uh, they might see a small uptick in, in some of these little small things that we just don't have without a person who's gonna see forty to forty-five hours right now.
Just got the monitor, and it's.
T V's gonna run, I mean, we, we have new heating and air conditioning system going in, so you're gonna see that running more.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just trying to make sure I'm accounting for all the little things without having to eat in any of the parts of the budget, so.
Understandable. Well, that seems to be a good start, I think. Um, how quick are you looking to fill that?
April one.
Okay.
I say go for it.
Yeah, I think this all looks good to me.
As the budget passes.
I'm glad you're able to stay within your budget that, uh, you already guys had already planned on, which is nice to see.
Yeah.
And I think that your hourly rate rates look, uh, very reasonable compared to what John had already come with, and, uh, you basically went backwards and then just slightly above, so I think that's a good starting point.
Yeah, yeah, I did, uh, I did a little bit of math, I did some additional research, uh, just 'cause when John was doing the study, it was about, you know, eight months ago.
Sure.
Um, I looked at some of the, the current rates that are out there now, on the lower side of things, twenty-two dollars and twenty-two cents an hour, uh, and on the high side of things, thirty-six dollars an hour. Um, that varied widely from just EMS, firefighter EMS, to, uh, just EMS, like just a paramedic. There are some times out there that are paying per diem paramedics like thirty-six dollars an hour, uh, which is a very healthy rate.
One benefit of having a paramedic, as you said, we're gonna get a better reimbursement for care.
It's possible, yeah, yeah, depending on how, depending on the acuity of patients, how much care they can be provided, then we certainly could have a, a higher reimbursement rate based on the care that they render.
You know, as our, our town ages, with a lot of people being here longer and longer, I think that it's a good step in the right direction for our town to have this person, uh, there. So somebody's on call, especially like you said, during the day when a lot of other people are at work, and, and take a little more time to respond.
Yeah, and I think the per diem alone is gonna help, um, the total amount of reimbursement rate, regardless of whether or not it's a paramedic or not. Um, when we're, when we're able to fulfill more calls, particularly the ambulance transports, um, that's actually billing that we get. When we utilize mutual aid, that billing goes to the mutual aid agency.
Yeah.
So that alone, I think, is gonna increase our, um, the reimbursement rate that we give them in a, those.
And I noticed she makes a lot of the fire fighting positions in with this drawing description, which.
Yeah.
I think will keep them busy, instead of sitting there at the station, uh.
We're not, um, you know, we're not busy enough where it's worth it to separate the two of those things, and, and that, we don't have a huge influx of just firefighting responders either. So to be able to, to take one universal position and put it on whichever truck is being requested for service is, is pretty beneficial.
Yeah, and if you have people that are all trained for those positions anyway, it's a win-win.
Yeah.
I notice you put a lot of leadership position responsibilities for this paramedic too.
Yeah, especially being the only person who's gonna be there at times and, you know, not knowing who's gonna be coming behind you, whether you have a chief or a deputy chief that's responding with you, or just a junior firefighter.
Right.
A lot of this has to have some.
Step up and take your responsibility to move out.
Yeah, there's, there's a possibility for them to be the acting officer in the absence of an officer.
I know that, I was quite specific about that.
Anything else while you're in front of us?
Nothing.
I appreciate you coming in, go through the breakdown with us.
Not a problem. I don't get any questions.
Very clear reading too, that was nice to see.
And police chief, I, I chatted with him today. He said he's working with you on looking at grants as they become available.
Where?
And I'd like to tag team with him is great.
Alright, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Jeff. Uh, we, we hopped over your position because you weren't here, but now you're here, we're leaving. The public has just entered the room. And we're gonna bring him up to the front.
Hey, how's it going?
Come up to the hot seat.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
I mean, alright.
We have some paving prices in, Jeff?
Yeah.
What's your deal with the board?
Advanced paving, set us a little photo on this bid, prices would be this year, or just kinda lock us up and say, they've been doing our paving for a number of years now. Every so often, we put it out to bid, but they've always prevailed and been the most reasonable thing for the town, pretty easy to work with. The big increase is paving, price per ton. It's basically up ten dollars a ton right now from where it was last year, which is unfortunate. But is, the driving factor behind that is the price of the liquid asphalt that they produce the pavement with. And prior to everything that's going on with Canada and what you're in the news today, they had some increases anyway, so this shows a reflection of that.
It's good to get the price in before anything else changes.
Well, it is, everybody does it. They have an escalation clause.
Right.
It is all, it's a state allowed escalation clause, and it all ties into the price of the liquid asphalt per ton. If that goes up, your price of asphalt goes up proportionally. And if it goes down, and he's credited us prices before in the past. It isn't just a one-way thing. Does it go down? If it does, not much usually, but it has in the past.
Twenty twenty-four is in the bowl, I think.
Okay.
But as the president said, we're gonna do drill, baby drill this year.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, we could sit here and argue what's gonna happen with it.
Well, you can't, you can't.
And we won't know until it happens.
It's gonna take another year for sure.
Do I think things are gonna go down? Probably not.
Do they ever?
Yeah, I was gonna say. You gotta be a realist if you're not. I mean, I, I've been very happy with the service holding the a throw. They, they take care of what we need, man.
I'll read the, I'll read the proposed bid prices for the advanced paving.
Yeah.
Machine pave is eighty-eight thirty per hour, uh, not per hour.
Yeah.
Per ton, right?
Yeah, that's in place per ton.
And handwork pave is one forty-five a ton. Reclaim is a dollar a square yard. Fine grade is seventy cents a square yard. Flagging is fifty-two an hour. Bobcat trim is one fifty. Sweeper's one fifty. And just to note, like Jeff said, all of these reclaimed fine grade flaggers, bobcat and sweeper are all the same prices last year.
Yeah, the only thing that really went up was the pavement, cause that includes the asphalt, also the handwork, because that is hand labor plus pavement, so. He bumped that up, I think, ten dollars a ton on that as well, to basically come across.
What's your biggest project this year for paving?
Um, probably the most extensive project tonnage-wise is gonna be putting a top coat on railroad, which is approximately a mile long.
Okay.
And then we're gonna do some more. And some other little small paving things, but we're not, we're not gonna be able to do a crazy amount of work this year. That'll take quite a bit of asphalt to do.
Just railroad?
Yeah. So, and again, I mean, if it's up ten dollars a ton, a thousand tons, you know, that's probably be about fifteen hundred tons to do that, so that's fifteen thousand dollars more than what we paid last year, but.
I'll make a motion to accept the March sixth, twenty twenty-five bid for the twenty twenty-five paving season prices from advanced paving and excavation. A second? Motion been made, second in all favor.
Alright.
And this is after the recommendation of the road agent.
I just wanted to come in and have Justin do one more action for it.
Yeah.
No, a couple years away out, we have to, we, we tried to bid it, no one even get close.
Well, when we got the, when we got our bond, and that was a substantial amount of paving, we felt that we should check prices and do it, and which we did, which made sense.
Yeah.
And they were still the best value for us. And in the past, the selectmen decided we should do that in a few years.
Yeah, the reputation of the company goes a long way too.
They give us good service. That's huge. Alright, well, that's great. Thank you. I appreciate you going along with that. And the other thing is, just one quick thing, I'm gonna give you update on our, our new truck. I guess the problem has been resolved. They had it down there for a period of time and it was, I simplified an electronic issue with the transmission talking to the truck, I guess. And they had to get the technical work to take care of it, and we got it back prior to the last snowstorm we had. It functioned excellently. All the way it was supposed to all through the storm. Pete's been doing, done some other pushing the snowbank back, winging it back, and it seems to work fine. So we resolved that, which I figured we would, but it was frustrating.
You'll be ready for election day of the snowstorm, right?
Well, looking at the long range forecast, it looks like we're gonna have pretty nice weather.
I know, it is.
Which is gonna be good, cause that's always makes it better.
It does.
Less, one less challenge, for sure.
No, 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 new news on our candidate either?
No, no one else today.
That's too bad.
No news today.
Well, before we start the mailbox item, we have a card here, thank you card for Justin on his way out for being selectmen. This'll probably be his last official Board of Selectmen meeting, even though he does have to come in the, in the early next week day. But Mike and I wanted to thank as long as the, the other people in town here and thank you for your services, selectmen. And keeping you both independent is, I think was very important to people as you came in here, and I think you proved that by a long shot, so. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Been a real pleasure, Justin.
It's been a pleasure to work with you guys. It's not the last time I'll be here. I'll be back, but I'm gonna take care of family for now and.
You've been a real, a real independent voice, and I appreciated that.
Thank you. Even when it hurts.
Even when it hurts.
Alright, thank you, Justin. Thanks for coming in, Jeff.
Yeah, no problem.
I appreciate that.
You all set with me?
I am, I think. We're a couple other things, we're gonna go through the mailbox items and.
Alright, I'm gonna get out of here.
See you later.
Thank you.
Thanks, bud.
I'll see you Tuesday.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, we'll see you Tuesday.
Okay, take care. Alright, on to mailbox items. We had a note in here from Chris Remlott. He sent it out a couple times to us in reference to his teaching and the continuing education that he had worked on. I had no issue with him continuing, cause at our last meeting that we discussed, that we told him that as long as his hours didn't change, we didn't mind if he continued.
He, he actually asked if he should appear for the board. I said, what's changed?
Nothing.
I said, nothing. Did it impact you at all? He said, no. I said, try it.
That, we were all on the same page, I guess, with that notice that went out, and that was good to see. And it was, it was good to see that he at least.
Checked with us.
Checked with us as well. We have a federal emergency management letter here in reference to FEMA. A notice that's updating the maps for the flood portion of our town. Would we have three, three people that were actually in that flood zone?
Close, not really. I think one of them was affected by it, but because the other two were so close.
Yeah.
As a courtesy, we sent them the notice.
And we also posted on our website.
Yeah, and I just updated it with the letter, the notice that went into the newspaper by them for the today's newsletter in Concord and then last week. So it, and now it says a little bit different information's available and they can.
Does that impact their insurance rates on their homes?
It gives them the ability to apply for this.
Flood insurance?
Flood insurance at a group rate.
Because normally, if it's in a flood zone, then not necessarily, their home insurance may not cover them.
Correct.
That's good to, we'll keep our residents aware on that.
Well, I was talking with the transfer station manager, Aston, to get the current list of all of his equipment and the year of the equipment, so we could see that. There is a pretty significant amount of equipment down there. Lean was updating our paperwork at the, at the town level here at the office, so. I asked him to provide that, so we have a complete list of what was down there. He has files on all that stuff as well. We have a letter of resignation from the fire department. From Sheldon Nason.
Yeah.
Junior.
It's definitely a resignation.
It is, this person is just, right now has other family obligations and busy at his opportunity for his work. And may come back around, but he just wanted to give that notice to the town. So we will accept that letter, and hopefully he has time to come back at later night.
He did say that he would stay on with the firefighter association, you know, with the events that they hold on the annual basis.
It's a five oh one C three, so.
Right, so.
He'd like to support that.
Completely separate from the fire department.
Correct.
And then the work that he does at the state level is related to legal. I'm not sure what the title, Brandon's still here, no. It's like legal advice for the fire department in that field, so he would still be available.
Yeah, that's a good time.
If we need the guidance or anything.
Back in the mailbox items. The next thing on here, we had a letter for a request for a first birthday party, approximately fifty guests, for the upper floor of the town hall, second floor. The reason this request was brought to us, it's been about a year since we've been using that upstairs, and we wanted to see if we wanted to change our policies at all. My thought is we should keep them as they are. They seem to be working well. Everything has to be a town event or to some benefit of the town right now that's using it. It's getting used a substantial amount, and I think we should stay away from private parties up there at this time.
Consensus.
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 Okay.
Keep it the same status quo.
It's like if we open it up, it's gonna jam it up for town events.
Yeah, and I think that.
Plus, you know, we've not been, luckily the plumbing has not been good either.
Yeah.
And I, I just wanna be more conservative as we approach these.
Like you say, a private party like that, they could plug it up for the towns just later, so.
No, it means it's, I, we approach it conservatively.
Okay, I'll, I'll contact the owner and notify the office staff, but.
We, we put together the TSS solar payment history, reconciled to the original contract amount. So our payments of eight fifty a month over the last six years. And then the seventy-third payment of thirty-one five ninety-two minus eighteen four oh eight. The total payment on that solar system will be one oh eight six seven nine over the life of what we've paid so far. And that payment history is good to have on record and it shows what that cost us to get that solar array. I think at the time that was proposed to us, it was about a two hundred and forty-nine or fifty thousand dollar solar array.
That money, those payments have been offset by credits with electricity.
That's correct, and it, it kept that amount, the same eight hundred and fifteen dollars as we were paying for those five buildings back five years ago.
And we get a few extra dollars every month.
Yeah.
Not, not a lot, but I think the money, the gravy train will come in when we actually own the panels.
Correct, yeah.
We have a couple thank you cards here from Don Edith Larson in reference to our having them, the dedication on the town report. And they were nice to get and receive. They were very well surprised.
I was gonna go, the surprise, yes, they were very pleased.
I think they're the most surprised we've had coming in here. Seemed like complete shock, which was nice to see. Again, I'm gonna reiterate that there was a couple of the cross and daily wetland permits are at the town. If you wanna look at those maps again, on file at the town.
I think they've been approved at the DES level. It's just for the climate that.
As in butter?
As in butter, and then the town clerk keeps the original.
I'm gonna put them in the back of here, Justin.
Application along with a little.
All this, no, just that, little two. And then here, I'll give this to you. Right on top, that is perfect. Okay, that's it as far as the mailbox goes. I wanna open up for public comment. Anybody?
Yeah.
Question, Lean, can I get a copy of the?
Sir, your name for the record?
Lee Martel. One two five Ten Hill Road.
Thank you.
Copy of the schedule for the meetings.
I have not done that, but I plan on getting it done.
Yeah, I like to pass them up.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I pass them up to the people who help me, and that way they, they can keep track of things, you know, and I can keep track.
You want it electronically in your email?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Or paper copy?
Well, paper would be better. Then I can make a bunch of copies. Just one copy's fine with me. But what happens is also is, I almost missed this meeting, cause like, you know, after a while, you forget, it's been so long.
Yeah.
And so I thought of it Monday, I was like, oh my goodness, I need to swap out cameras and get things organized here, so.
Yeah, so we're gonna continue on this schedule one. Lean and I talked, it's worked very well, and if there becomes a holiday where it lines up and doubles up, then we'll skip a meeting.
Or if this special league comes up, we can call a special meeting and always keep your performance.
Right, no, you're right, I understand that, sure.
The schedule seems to be working well.
I think so. As long as we have the same number of weeks, then it shouldn't be an issue.
Okay. Thank you for getting that going, Lean. Any update, Lean, on our fire department sign?
No, the last thing that was holding it up was the, the patch that Brandon has redesigned, cause the last patch that they used was, was he? Right, well, the patch itself, the image in the middle was distorted and not very clear. And it was old enough that he felt, because their uniforms were changing, patches on their uniforms were different from what that would have reflected on, on the sign. He just wanted everything.
Is that all been ironed out now?
Yeah, yeah, he was very helpful and patient, and that was the last piece that they had to add was the, the patches that they were able to.
Okay, so maybe if you reach out and see if we get an update to get that.
Yeah, for a time period, yeah.
They're gonna install it as well, right?
Yeah, oh, absolutely, yeah.
Nothing else from the public? Lean, do you have anything else for us?
Nope, nothing right off the top of my head.
Justin?
Nothing.
Come on, this is your last chance.
That's it. I just wanna reiterate, it's been a pleasure to work with Justin as, as tenure ago. Thank you, Justin. Thank you very much. Again, we never agreed on everything, but the thing is, it was a pleasure, and again, you were a gentleman working with me. It really was. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, that being said, public comment is over. The selectmen are over. We have a couple of non-publics go into. I'm gonna make a motion that we have a two-minute recess after this, but we'll be going to non-public per RSA ninety-one dot A, colon three, or my numeral two, C, for the tax collector, and right after that, we're gonna follow into one for B, for the town clerk. And we'll close those non-publics right in a row after this.